Ms. Moore, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. I'm sorry. I'm with it. I just couldn't hear.
So I just did the whole thing. You're Truman and your Ingles Lego League is awesome, is what I said.
Okay.
So glad to have the students with us. And if you could go ahead and introduce your amazing team for us.
Okay, so yes, you are exactly correct. Our Ingles Lego team is amazing. So you spoke the truth. First, I want to introduce our two teachers that run our Lego League. That's Tracy Hendrick. She's a fourth grade teacher in Angelica Sadler. So they really do all the work. I'm just kind of a behind the scenes person. But tonight, we do have Ollie Morrison, Adam Kahari, and Chris Cooper on. So if you guys want to unmute, just say hello.
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 And I just wanted to stay, say, in case anybody else didn't hear, that we did win the Motivate Award. And this award celebrates a team that embraces the culture of first Lego League through team building, team spirit, and displayed enthusiasm. So we're really, really proud of that award. I think we were one of two groups who received awards at that Lego League competition. So thank you for honoring us this evening.
Great work and congratulations, team. Thank you, Ms. Moore. And students, we have something we'll be sending you as well. And then our second school is Warford. Warford students in grades two through five are invited to participate in the Warford Poetry Club under the leadership of Mrs. Dana Tillard. They meet after school once a week to express themselves through the art form of poetry. Students are able to write about topics they are interested in. They also practice their public speaking skills by reading their work in front of one another. Warford is excited about how well the club has been received and expanded. And Warford principal Erica Edwards is joining us online, and I believe Mrs. Tillard is here as well. And second grade student Noel Watson, who is a member of the Poetry Club, is going to share a short poem with us.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm the proud principal of Warford Elementary. So as Ms. Clifford Wambel shared, I do have Ms. Tillard, who is my lead for our Poetry Club, which is a new club this school year after school, has been well received by our students. And students are just excited enough that they invite their friends to also participate. So Ms. Tillard, if you want to just say hello so they can see who you are.
Hello, everyone.
And then we also have Noel. She's going to be reading a poem titled Poetry Is. So Noel, you can go ahead and unmute and share your poem.
Hey. This is called Poetry by Noel Watson. Poetry is rhymes or not. Poetry is fun. Poetry is shining bright like the sun. Poetry is music. Poetry is history. Poetry lets you know what do you want to be when you grow up. Poetry helps you learn new words, express and express your feelings. Poetry is sometimes about love and kindness. She is not a
Oh, I think you may have frogs.
She is poetry. Anyone could do poetry. Would you like to write with me?
All right. Thank you, Noel. You all can just give her some little snaps to encourage her. Thank you.
Awesome job, Noel. That was great. We look forward to hearing more from you in the future, and thank you. And before I go to my seat, I did want to acknowledge School Board Appreciation Week, which was February 13th. And you will see, we have baskets for each of our board members. And we want to say thank you for the time that you give and the service that you give. And I want to thank our students, principals, and staff who all work together to make the baskets for you. So thank you.
Now, can I hear?
I got a thumbs up from Ms. Black Cardy, so yes.
You can hear? Okay. We got seven, six. Nine, one, closed session personnel matters.
This
Miss Black.
You want to talk about closed session personnel matters?
I missed the introduction, but the person at the podium's got a Zoom that's too close, and that's why you're getting the feedback. Are you ready for me or? Okay, are you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, this comment pertains to Agenda Item 9.0, Closed Session 9.1 Personnel Measures. As a lifelong resident of the Hickam Mills C1 School District and an alumni, I am embarrassed at what the current school board has become and asking for the resignation of board members as mentioned in the Kansas City Star, February 2nd, 2022, page 19. Missouri Attorney General investigating how Hickam Mills School Board does business.
Closed Personnel Matters. Closed Personnel Matters is a hiring resignation of teachers, staff.
Can I just do for a new business?
No. But go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Edens.
The complaint exposes dysfunction that's doing nothing to improve learning for students in a district that has been struggling to regain its state accreditation since 2012. School board members should be above reproach. And Mr. McGee, there seems to be allegations that follows you from one office to another. You filed for county legislator's second district and 26th Ward Democratic Committee man. These allegations not only hurt our students, our accreditation, and our community. Mr. McGee, you should not be holding any public office. That's it.
Thank you. Now we have Teresa Edens. Accreditation update.
Yes. Sorry, had to remember to mute myself. New housing is and has been happening all around us for some time now. Currently, there is a possibility of that happening here also. And we can agree, I'm sure, that that would be a tremendous boon for all. However, one of the first things being asked about is the school district. And I think we can all also agree that a response at this time would not be positive. It is not up to me to make judgments, but as a former director myself, I have to say that it would be in the best interest of the students and the greater community, which you represent, for anyone under investigation to resign immediately.
And Cynthia Corn.
Thank you. I speak tonight in regards to the district's progress towards accreditation. Since 2012, we have been on this path to reach full accreditation. I've heard blame placed on the teachers for not doing enough, the principals for poor leadership, or even the district leadership for not guiding the path well enough. Yet the aspect of accreditation that desperately needs everyone's attention is board governance. To that end, I must say that as a former employee of this district, it is incredibly disappointing to see how this board has been acting month in and month out. Not only have you lost sight of what's really important to the kids, you've lost sight of your job. You should be governing the district in collaboration with the superintendent to make the path towards accreditation as smooth as possible. Yet from a citizen's perspective, I see grown adults acting less than professional and far from appropriate. Calling names, dismissing colleagues, and playing like your political career is more important than the lives and well-being of our kids and their families. Your actions as a board have eroded the public's trust, and the continued ineptitude on display concerns me to no end. It is apparent that the board leadership is unable to execute their duties as board members. And those that support them without any critical thought are unequipped to do the hard work necessary to be an effective board member. I call on the board leadership to do the right thing and resign. It is going to take time and unceasing levels of transparency to restore our trust in the board again. I implore the board to hold each other accountable so that this labor is not laid at the feet of their constituents. We are not pawns in your game to gain political clout. Do better, folks. Be better. Our kids and families deserve it. Thank you.
So Virginia Tom, it's 5.0. Thank you, Mr. President. We've got some stuff on here. You know this is February is Black History Month, and throughout our schools is well-recognized as well as beyond our school walls. And so we've got a couple of presentations tonight that we want to share with the board as well as with the community in terms of what's happening in our schools. And I'll call on Urban Middle School to step up, Ms. Black Cardy, principal. And they're going to share some highlights of things that are happening at that particular school. But reflective of all of our schools are engaged in some really good activities in fostering Black History Month. Ms. Black Cardy?
Thank you, Ms. Geraldine, Superintendent O'Bein, and board members, members of the faculty. I am super proud tonight to share with you what Urban Elementary Pre-K 5 is doing to celebrate and honor Black History Month. All of our classes are engaged in some kind of research and writing piece about Black Americans, past or present, yes, even our pre-K students. And for our Black History program, we are going to feature our first, third, and fifth graders. Our music teacher is teaching them songs from artists such as Marvin Gaye, Luke Allen, or Rachel Franklin, and more. Students are also learning about the biographies of these artists whose songs they are going to perform. In our art class, our art teacher is tying it all together on having students complete artwork and learn about famous Black artists in American history. So for example, then, as you walk into our music program, our first grad will be lined up and presenting their wax museum. So they are super excited for that. But tonight, I'd like to highlight our third grade, and I think we should have one third grade student on in Ms. Jessup's sweet classroom with students. Ms. Sweet tied relevant, tied, really did something engaging with her students. That just really caught my eye. She tied something current that the kids know with the social media, like Instagram, into a little research blog, um, uh, research, um, project to create fake Instagram accounts. And so I've got Juliana, the sweetest she on?
I'm not sure. Juliana, if you're there, can you unmute, please?
I'm here.
Yay. Okay, cool. Go ahead, Juliana, when you're ready.
Okay. Hi, my name is Juliana, and I'm in Ms. Sweet's third grade class. This year for Black History Month, Ms. Sweet made a fake Instagram account for Black History Month. We each randomly picked a person. We researched about them and what they did. Thank you.
What did you research, Juliana?
I researched Louis Armstrong.
Yeah, so thank you, Juliana, so much. But yeah, we just, we made a histogram instead of an Instagram, a histogram. And each kid got to learn, and it's awesome because we're doing our research projects right now, typing up research papers. So it was really awesome. Thank you so much, Juliana. You should back up a little bit so we can see your cute face, though. We just saw your hair and your cute shirt, but thank you, babe.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing your story. All right, so keep
I feel so embarrassed. I have to speak up for the other people.
Juliana, babe, you can log off.
That was classic. Continue on with our Black History theme. You know, one of the things we look at in our district in terms of focusing on is the past, present, and the futures. And you saw even from Juliana recognizing individuals who have been historic throughout American history. But we have to look homegrown. And today, I have the privilege of profiling one of our own staff that has not just talked about it, but walked the talk. And Mr. Scott, we got a video before we started about Officer Silas Rogers. And I'm going to ask him to talk about the video. But I wonder if you see this little clip that was done from our students in recognition of the contributions that Mr. Rogers does with our students and with Ruskin High School. All right, let's come in. Get that show soon. You gotta click the audio on that. Yeah.
I got five minutes. Don't be late, all right? If you're doing that. You good, nephew? You good, niece? All right. You do the same. I wanted to be a school resource officer because I worked for the streets for three years. And I saw kids in my neighborhood in these streets doing some things they shouldn't be doing. I started talking to them, building relationships with them. And I said, you know what? I have more impact if I can see them every day. Why are you skipping? I got five minutes. Don't be late, all right? If you're doing all right. Yeah, it's gonna be on there, too. And I had a lot of interaction with my community. I've been blessed to work South Patrol, which is South Kansas City, the same area I grew up in. I went to Burke Elementary. I went to Smith Hill Junior High School, and I graduated from Ruskin. So to me, being a school resource officer at Ruskin was my dream job. These kids need to see people that look like them doing things that they want to do. So you'd be surprised. A lot of, a lot of kids want to be police officers, and I encourage them to do so in Kansas City. I tell them all the time, this is the greatest job on earth. I mean, it's something different every day. It's never the same thing. I build relationships with these kids. A lot of these kids, I went to school with their parents. So I call them all nephews and nieces. It's like family to me. I got a student now that's a sophomore at Ruskin. I actually changed her diapers. So it's like, when I tell you it's really like family, it's like family. The culture of Ruskin has changed over the years. When I first came here in 2015, Ruskin was known for fighting. It's a bad school, bad community. All they do is fight. Don't send your kids to Ruskin. When I hear the community or anybody outside Ruskin speaking negative towards Ruskin, that's not what it is for me. Because for me, I think I've been successful. My son is a police officer in Kansas City, Missouri. He also works off duty as school resource officer when opportunity presents itself for him to do so. And a lot of it is, these kids, once again, have so many challenges at home before they get to school. So something as simple as meeting the kid when they come to the door, hey, how you doing? How was your weekend? How was last night? Is everything okay? Just a simple conversation with them changes the day because nobody's ever asked that. You know, from their, from their world, everybody's always telling them to do something. Nobody's asking how they feeling or what they think. So if you ask them how they feel and what they think and what their day is going on, what I find out is you get a different response. They'll tell, they'll tell you and they'll share with you. And once they know that you care for them genuinely, they'll do anything you ask them to do. So I think that's why we have the success we have now today at Ruskin High School. So I see the culture changing. Now for kids to not want to talk to police and don't come to police, they talk to me. They talk to all of us. Every one of my kids has access to me personally and my personal cell phone number. So they call me and their parents call me. They all have the same access. They'll call me on the weekend because that's, that's what I believe I'm here. I'm here to serve you. As a police officer, I'm a servant to the community is how I look at it. And I serve with compassion. I serve with empathy. I serve with understanding. Because we're all one, one, one situation, one choice removed from being in a bad situation, right? And I tell everybody also every day, and I believe this with all my heart, I don't have one bad kid at Ruskin High School, but I have a bunch of bad choices. If you walk with me and you beat in the halls, you see these kids are great. They're loving, they're caring, they're compassionate. But at the end of the day, they're kids, so they don't know. Us as adults, I feel we have the obligation to teach them and show them the right way and lead them the right way. Because if we do that, then they'll go on and be productive in the, in the community and in the city and environment they live and work in. When I see my kids go to college and get scholarships on signing days, man, that's a win for me. If I get one kid that came in here with a bad attitude that was, man, forget the world, but then after having a conversation with me, they, they see hope, that's a win for me. That's why I come back every day. I love this, man. I love this. I love these kids, and they know it. I'm telling you, I have a relationship with kids that graduated five years ago that's in college. I got a kid playing football at University of Minnesota that calls me, tells me, hey, he had a rough day at practice or he had a great day at practice. I mean, I have a relationship with kids that I wouldn't have if Ruskin High School didn't provide me that opportunity. And I'm thankful for it, and I thank God for putting me in this position and allowing them, you know, for these kids to bless me. And that's what they understand. They bless me more than I can ever bless them, I believe.
Officer Rogers, thank you for coming before me. It gives me great pleasure to recognize you in this month as our, you know, school community profile. It's well worth your recognition in terms of the work you've done from, since you were a kid. One thing I did notice in the video, I noticed you had a comb you had back.
I did. And you're not the only one. Everybody picked up on that. If you guys notice, it's still growing. I combed it this morning. Yes, sir.
See, I know the board members will have some congratulations and things for you, but give you a minute if you want to say something. I mean, I'm interested in what, how you sustaining the connection with the kids, you know, over the years. So now, when I, when I came to Hickam Mills, when I come to Ruskin, kids talk about, oh, Officer Rogers. And then I hear from staff, Officer Rogers, and I lose this Officer Rogers.
Well, first of all, I appreciate that. And I like to thank God. Like I said, everywhere I sit in that video, I meant. And I like to thank the board members, like to thank the president of the board, you, Dr. Bean, one of my original sergeants, Sergeant Rinty's over there. He's a captain now. And Dr. Fields for stepping up, and of course, Ms. Marissa and Casey. And past board members and presidents in the building, I like to thank all you all because it takes a village. It's not just me. I have a whole team, from Mr. Allen to Mr. Barker to Ms. Mootrade and Ms. Curtis, to every teacher in the building. It's not just me, but it's the team, and I'm really humbled. I'm really humbled by this. But I did start out in Burke and went to Smith Hill and graduated from Ruskin. And my story is my story, and it's the truth. And the kids, the kids feel that, you know? And once, once they know that you care and you genuine, you just share your story with their story, and most of them are parallel. Like I said, they'll, they'll move mountains for you and for all of us, and that's what our kids do. And once again, being in the streets and working South Patrol and seeing the kids in the streets and doing some things that I know they're better and doing things that they don't even realize they're capable of doing. So that was my encouragement to come to school. And Sergeant Dyster asked me about ever I considered about becoming this full-time. And I did. I thought about it. And our original chief is Chief Forte, and he encouraged me to do so, too. But at that time, as you all know, Kansas City has school resource officers, and Hickam Mills did not. We have a off-duty job for us. So you have KCPD working in the district, but no one was full-time. So I took a leap of faith for former superintendent Dr. Cargill, and I wrote her a letter. I told her I was really interested. And by the way, Dr. Cargill cheated off me in geometry, and I helped her get to where she is, but that's a whole nother story. But, uh, but, but they blessed with the opportunity, and it's truly a blessing. I'm truly blessed for it. I love serving. That's, that's just what I, my God-given gift is, is to serve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
President, I figured if you had any comments or if we remember the story that Officer Rogers, you know?
Well, you know, I've known me on, in, in the building, out the building. I see him all over the place. You see me working out where I'm working. It's amazing how many times we cross paths. He's slammed down a little bit. He's always been a positive inspiration to the community. And he's always, he's always been it. He's always got a smile on his face, no matter where I see him, you know, even at my lunch spot.
I just want to say thank you for being there for our students and for all you do.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And it's obvious in the video that the students love and respect you.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you got touched. You didn't even know you were touched.
Yes, ma'am. And if, and if, if I'm completely honest with you, I was kind of reluctant to, to doing this. And it was just, it was just fitting. Mr. Allen and I was having a conversation. He was like, man, they want to do a video on you in Ruskin. And I said, nah, you know, you guys know what I do, and everybody knows what we do. He's like, no, you, you need to do it. They're trying to give you a rose while you're live. And I thought about it. I'm like, you know what, man? Okay, Mr. Allen, if you say it's a good idea, I trust you that much. And I it just produced what it produced, and, and I appreciate it. I mean, I didn't everyone, everyone knows, you know, I do it for the kids, and the feeling's mutual. And, and they truly call me on the weekends. Their parents call me on the weekends, and it's tough. You know, we, this job is tough, and I go on some tough calls, and you all know, recently, I went on one involving our kids. And but I wouldn't do it any other way. I wouldn't do it any other way.
That's when you know you've touched a lot. You've touched a student.
Thank you all. All right. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, I, I don't know how this is going to go because he's a little hostile towards me because we play dominoes. Last time I beat him on the video game, I haven't seen him like in six months, so I don't know how this is going to go.
I define, I define it as an anomaly, like a real anomaly, especially for me. Let's say something that derives from what is standard, normal, or expected. And I have tried to me to have been on calls. We have been in some unfortunate situations when it comes to our students.
Yes, we have.
You, you, like, I need you to understand
You, you like, I, I need you to understand, I, I rock with you a lot. And I'm, and I'm saying this more on the personal aspect because I think it does need to be acknowledged here. You actually care about our kids and you take the aspect of being a resource. Me as a social worker, I'm already thinking the aspect of resources and support for our students. But as far as being there, be on the scene to talk to parents, to make sure the parents understand, to be able to work with people throughout their grieving process. Now, it, and I, I know this for a fact. I, I know that if we took a survey of our school and the aspect of you not being there, uh, our students would walk out. And to me, that, that, that's, that creates an anomaly when it comes to any other district in the Casey metro area. I mean, even Missouri, especially our kids. And I want you to know that I hope you do that regard. So I, I want you to continue to be the anomaly that you are.
Thank you. And I'm humbled by every comment you just made. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, guys.
One thing you gotta recognize that the video is not really about you.
Right.
It's about all the people around you who want to recognize this for them. So once again, you're given, so thank you for doing that.
And thank you. All right.
Okay, um, I'm going to move to, uh, mask mandate, Dr. Skinner. Dr. Skinner is going to give some detail around, um, our update to return to learn plan. And considering the local nature of mask mandates, we thought it'd be appropriate for, uh, the board to get a little bit of context and to have recognition from, um, these staff.
Good evening. Putting up, uh, just a couple of slides. The first slide is showing some data and it's a little small. Um, but basically you can kind of look at it in the top upper quadrant is Kansas City, Missouri is their dashboard. It's from basically, um, April twenty twenty, all the way through, um, today, which is, you know, February twenty twenty two. And if you'll look, I've kind of tried to demonstrate with a couple of arrows on the far right part of that where it spiked, uh, we're not quite there yet. But if, uh, go back, it spiked, um, on January fifteenth to thirty eight point six percent. And as fast as it has spiked, it's come down as, uh, February nineteenth, it was seven point nine percent. And if you look at the bottom quadrant, right below that is Eastern Jackson County, and you'll see something very similar. You'll see that it spiked right around the same time of January ninth at thirty seven point six percent. And it's currently as of February thirteenth down to nine point one. And, you know, I've been showing you on that top right quadrant, kind of basically the students of ages five through nineteen that reside in the district boundaries. And so just a snapshot of the last five weeks or so, you'll see that in January of seventeenth, right about the same time of spiking, you'll see that we were dealing with about a hundred and twenty six cases in a two week period. As to currently, we're down to twelve. So with all of that being said, you look at Missouri as a whole, you'll see that the last seven days, again, back in January, January twenty fifth, we were looking at about a thirty five point two percent positivity rate. And as of yesterday, we are at eight point three percent. So basically, all of the positivity rate, anywhere you look, whether you're looking at city, county or state, it's under ten percent. So if you look at the next slide, based on this recommendation from the science and the data, the superintendent is recommending that we end our mask mandate effective Monday, February twenty eighth. And masks be optional for students and staff regardless of vaccination status.
You might want to keep that out there.
Mr. President.
Yes, Director.
I believe that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to, uh, to end the district mask mandate effective Monday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Masks will be, and masks be optional for students and staff regardless of vaccination status.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Then move to second, direct to accept the superintendent's recommendation to end the district mask mandate effective Monday, February twenty eighth to the twenty twenty two. Masks will be optional for students and staff regardless of vaccination status. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know, will they still be, uh, doing temperature checks on, is, is that, that end, that end? Okay.
We, we, we've not been doing a regular temperature check, check in a while. We basically take it as needed.
Any other questions?
Is, Mr. President, uh, assuming I'm just more or less affirming that any chance that with the regular plan being updated, that if it does swing back in the other direction, because we don't know, uh, that we would, uh, have recommendations brought to us to read, read, uh...
If, if there were an upswing and required it again, we could best definitely bring it back as an option. I will also reassure everybody that, you know, we do test regularly as needed when students and staff are symptomatic. And we did just get a shipment from CDC of over eight hundred tests. And so we have plenty of tests. But even with that being said, you'll see on the dashboard, our numbers have drastically gone down the last few weeks.
Any more questions, more discussion?
Will you still have the masks in the building should a student want to?
Yes, we have, we have ample supply of masks. Kansas City Health Department gave us over twenty thousand masks that we have in storage that we could distribute to the nurses and the administration office. And when students request, we will still be giving them to them.
Any more questions?
All right, uh, it's been part of the second that, that we accept it. That we accept the superintendent's recommendation and the mask mandates effective, uh, Monday, twenty eighth. February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, option for students and staff regardless of vaccination status. Mrs. Kendra.
Hi.
Mr. McKee.
Hi.
Ms. Carter.
No.
Ms. Graves.
Hi.
Mr. Lockery.
Hi.
Ms. Coleman.
Hi.
And Mr. Townsend.
Uh, Dr. Skinner, please be made before we, uh, I wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, recognize Dr. Skinner. Dr. Skinner has sort of, uh, I think I was a resident medical doctor as well consulting, uh, COVID and vaccination. Had vaccination clinics, the community, done testing, got kits, masks, PTP, all kinds of. The, the task is not over, but I wanted to recognize publicly that you've been on the job continuously and will continue to monitor it to go through these, uh, one hundred months. And so thank you, Dr. Skinner, for your commitment and efforts, uh, throughout the week and on weekends as well.
Thank you.
I said you accepting the patient.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um, the last update I have is, is no school, uh, updates, not much of an update, but, uh, we're still working on developing plans. I'll say in the last, uh, couple of weeks, we've had, uh, two parent, uh, consultations to give feedback on parent. And last time we had an opportunity with some about community, uh, associations in the area. And they were able to give us some good feedback, both on the historical fact and the work they would like to see in the future. So continue to look for updates and hopefully we'll have a solid plan in the near future that we can, uh, start moving forward with. That is, uh, the end of, of my comments and reports. Mr. President, back to you.
All right, consent items. Just have one. Everybody have a chance to look into January twenty seventh to twenty twenty two. For a session. Anybody there for me?
I'm compassionate.
Yes.
It says I wasn't present during the vote.
Wasn't.
You said, okay. I'm not aware of that, Miss Monroe.
Do you want, either we, we, uh, pull the item, uh, consent, I have a proper discussion. So if we can pull the item and there's a piece there or there's something you want to communicate offline, Ms. Graves, you have this, um, Ms. Hicks. Um, there's a technical error. We can fix that as well.
Thank you.
So everybody's good with the minutes. Okay. Yes. You want to pull it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I think we got a six, one, two.
You can pull it on, put it on a new business, I guess. Oh, we're actually, we're actually there, aren't we?
Yeah.
So what are we doing?
Seven O C.
Yeah.
Seven O C. There isn't a motion to do that.
Actually, there is a two already. There is a second case. You're going to have to be, uh, E.
F.
S.
You don't need a motion. Move it to.
I don't think you need a motion.
General, general.
You can just move it.
What do you think?
Hey, you can move that into, um, okay, I think I'm around the regular general without a motion.
All right. We'll get to F. Seven F. Now we're down to seven. You're up again.
Okay, um, accreditation report. Mr. Scott, I think you have, uh, a presentation there. Wanted to share with the board and the public, and we'll try to make this brief. We, the past week, we had an opportunity to start conversations with, uh, Desi regarding, uh, not that one. Should be on the, this one.
The fifteen?
Yes, that one. Um, had an opportunity to have a conversation with Desi regarding, uh, requesting full accreditation for Hickman Mills. And I wanted to highlight some of the information that we shared with Desi for the board and for the public. So people knew the evidence we were, we were, um, providing and, uh, if I could ask, um, well, I'll shoot through this pretty quick. But if you want to just, uh, advance the screens and I will, uh, I'm not going to do the full presentation, but I wanted to highlight certain areas and I'll get some staff to, uh, take, go next slide. Okay, uh, no, next slide. Okay. So there are two framework pieces in, in this review. There's a student performance piece and there's a system review piece. This is the same profile they had given us about a year ago in terms of in the interim during the pandemic. So we were able to, to present to Desi how we felt we had evidence in each of these categories. So we advanced the slide. So starting with the student performance, I asked Ms. Rowe to come and speak to, uh, this portion instructional program.
Hey, good evening, board. Uh, this slide illustrates for you what our MAP performance index is. They take the percentage of students who are proficient or advanced and assign points. The, what I would draw your attention to is that where the red boxes are, is where a new assessment was administered. So you can see the number of times and the volatility in the assessment program, um, of each year of students having to take a new assessment, teachers implementing new standards. Um, what you will see there is from the twenty eighteen to the twenty nineteen school year, you will see that there is a slight increase in scores. Um, you know, we do attribute some of that to, uh, the stability in that assessment happening over more than one year's time. And then, of course, we had our break in the twenty twenty assessments once COVID hit.
Next slide. Yeah, we're missing a slide. We move to the slide after that one. No, no. You hold. Another slide after that one. Go back to this little slide. Okay, so the next slide. Okay, we're, we're missing a slide. But anyways, uh, we'll, we'll skip that, I guess. The, uh, we did talk with Desi about this research of the, uh, at St. Louis, in the Prime Institute, where they translated Desi data with, um, pre-reduced lunch. Uh, students and looked at it. There's actually learning happening in those districts. And our districts was, was profiled and, uh, in the research identified that we had, uh, a few schools that demonstrated that there was actually real teaching and learning happening, you know, some growth measures that were happening there. One thing that Desi is looking at right now is what's called student growth measures. So in terms of how students advance from when they start to where they end up. So if you have a student who's in fourth grade and they arrive and, but they're reading at first grade and throughout the course of the year, where you were to move them from first grade to third grade, that's a great accomplishment. The old sort of, um, ma- matrix and, and map scores, that seemed to begin as zero, meaning that they didn't reach a great level. But now they're counting that there's been wild growth over the course of the year, two years, and get some measurement of that. And, uh, so this report kind of goes into real detail, into the firing port around how the, the data works and that and how, uh, valid the teaching is in those schools that have high concentration of those socioeconomic kids, but yet are still achieving but not recognized in the traditional, um, Desi sort of, uh, reporting. So we kind of highlighted that piece and it's something that they're now looking at in terms of, um, including in their process and sort of validating accreditation for districts. So that's an opportunity for us. Next slide. Ms. Franklin, if you want to get to, uh, you got a backup one.
Good evening. Um, this is just a quick look at some of the progress that we've made in our I-ready scores from the two, uh, twenty nineteen school year through the twenty one, twenty two school year. And just very quickly, as you can see, we're really happy to see that we are seeing growth from fall to winter. So that's the first assessment to the middle assessment, and then we'll take another one in the spring. And so for twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty one, you can see that we started at twenty four percent, went up to thirty two percent, took just a slight dip. And then looking at the twenty one and then twenty one, twenty two school year, we started in the fall at thirteen percent and then we went up to twenty two percent. So we're excited about that. And then again, for math, I'll just kind of focus on where we are this year. We started at six percent. Math is still an area that we are working on, but we also see that our students may gain this winter up to fifteen percent. So our hope is that we'll see continued growth from the winter to the spring. But we always want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. So that's always a good sign. Move it to the next one. I'll just... And these are just detailed, uh, numbers for you to see across grade levels. So you can see where kids are performing at the primary grades, and then you can see where students are performing at the intermediate grades and then at the middle school level. We also have some ninth grade scores on here. And then the box off to the side just highlights some of our strengths, where we can see our increases from fall to winter, looking at nearly every single grade level making gains. So we know that there's still more work to do, but again, we're always wanting to capitalize on the progress that we're seeing. That means there's opportunities for more growth. And then that next slide is just, um, showing math. So there's the reading, the math, and then the total school scores. And so again, we're just looking at gains for kids scoring at or above grade level. We want to see more kids, um, scoring, kids who are in the bottom, we see over here in the red, those are kids that are scoring two or more grade levels below. So the goal is always to move those kids over. We want to see those numbers decrease. And then we want to see the yellow. and then we want to see the yellow increase, and then the green increase from there, so that's the, that's the goal that we're looking for.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. So you can see there from the data, we've got continuous growth, one of the things that Dessie is looking at is continuous growth throughout the year, so the student starts in August, September, where they end up in, like, by game, and right now, we're on track in all those areas that we're seeing growth, that's bold as well, um, for us. This slide is just kind of articulating our special ed education, since we go back to perfect sector, we can just see that just gives you a little bit of profile in terms of, uh, percentages, we do have a high percentage of special ed, uh, you know, you really want to be around ten, twenty, twelve percent, and Missouri is actually high, it's in the thirteen, uh, percentile, and we're at about fourteen percent, but what that says to me is that we've got a lot of parents who are satisfied with the services, so they've stayed, even though you can look at the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen data, where it will increase, you should see that percentage decrease as well, too, but yet, it's special ed still takes up, so, um, so let's get to the services that are being provided to student services. Next slide? Uh, English language learners, um, you can see a slight tick up, we're getting an increase in newcomer students, uh, we're reorganizing programs to ensure that, um, they get what they need to reach the norm levels in terms of co-teaching models that we've got, and curriculum in terms of apprentice curriculum in terms of, um, being very easy as, um, second language learners, but we are increasing those numbers, and we've got a number of different languages, you can see at the bottom of the screen in our district, and that continues to grow, and probably anticipate, um, growing that, right now, I'm in the process of trying to get in touch with, um, refugee, citizenship, uh, settlement organization, they usually have numbers of, for the city in terms of what's coming in, and we can be predictive around programming that we need to prepare for if we're going to get an influx of, um, non-English speaking, um, students in the near future. Okay, next slide? Student services, so these are some of the soft skills, you know, right now, mental health and, um, is a critical piece for, um, schools during this pandemic, so you can see there's a number of programs that we're still pertaining to the soft domains for our students, whether it's around social, emotional learning, and connecting with the different, uh, mental health agencies in our area, and also providing services, legal services for our students as well as our, our, our families as well. Next slide? Okay, um, this is another hardcore data piece, again, you can see advanced credits. So you see on twenty nineteen that, um, we've shot off, so we've done a really good job of reinvesting in getting kids into dual credits and, uh, eighteen courses, and you can see in twenty nineteen data that we're sixty-eight point seven percent, so we overachieved the state. Right, so we were happy to share that with them, that, you know, we're above their, their, um, their mark, and that we continue to, um, offer those opportunities for our kids. Next slide? Congratulations, great, great. Um, let's get to this, Ms. Rowe?
Sure, this is my favorite topic, um, so you'll see here that really we hit an all-time high of eighty-eight point six percent in twenty nineteen, which was just shy of the state average of ninety percent, so that still is our goal. Um, that, you know, there's note at the bottom, that's over a fifteen percent increase since twenty fifteen, so just over six years' time. Um, really speaks to the work done at the high school level in terms of continuing to track kids, um, the partnership between Burke and Ruskin to ensure that students have multiple ways to be successful and graduate via alternative, um, programming. We hit a bit of a dip, as you can see there during COVID times, and trying to get kids back re-enrolled and stay engaged, um, but we'll continue to push that number in our striving towards that ninety percent mark again this year.
Right? This is my favorite slide. So one thing we did, and we shared this with Dessie as well, too, is try to look at, uh, districts like us, and to look at Kansas City and St. Louis, urban centers that have similar profiles as us, and look at our graduation rate, you can see they're in the, uh, low to mid-seventies, we lost several years in, in twenty twenty-one, and we consistently stayed in the, um, eighty percentile from the mid to, um, high eighties, but at the same time, the bottom, you'll notice that we've got the highest mobility rate, and I think we've got the highest mobility rate in the state, but even with that mobility rate, and we know that mobility is a significant factor in student achievement, right, when you have a student that's not there for the entire year, the likelihood of them achieving their goals, academic goal, is significantly higher than students achieve after the full ten months, and we've got the higher rate, but at the same time, we're still graduating students at a higher rate than our, um, urban partners as well, too, so that was a significant piece we wanted to point out to them, that, you know, we're doing some good work considering numbers in comparison to, um, our urban centers, at the same time, the, uh, those other two districts are accredited, um, so that was a good comparison to show that, um, we meet and sometimes exceed some of the, uh, standards. Next slide? And so under the systems review, this is the other category that they look at, so looking forward to slides, and we spoke to these areas as well, next slide? I won't spend too much time, but the, um, one area to look at is leadership, and continuity of leadership with, um, and so we talked about, uh, the board's governance in terms of supporting, um, superintendent and superintendent contract, in terms of implementing the academic plans, that was good, and get a profile of our EL team, we've got a unique ELT team that has individuals who have worked, um, outside of district and other districts that have significant success, we've got a great balance of people who've been here for several years, but also with some new players who have some new thinking to, uh, to think forward, so that was intriguing for them to see that we have that focus. We kind of profile our student achievement task force, in terms of the work we're doing, and, uh, share with them what we call is a SAP, the student achievement plan, so every single student we're working on getting an individual plan, right now, we targeted, um, like, ten to fifteen percent from each school, and eventually, our planners have actually got some longitudinal data for each student, so we can look over the course of a couple of years, you can see a student that started at grade three, whatever, and you can kind of move along and see how they improve. So similar to kind of an IEP, but every student has one around that, and then some of the other areas that we've been working on to improve our, our district and the success we've had with our return to learn, uh, plan as well, middle school redesign is something we share with them that we're doing, but that was an area of focus for them in terms of what we're doing with middle school, that was one of our global areas, and we, and we were able to, um, explain that we've got some, uh, robust plans in the works in terms of redesigning and looking out to continue to improve the structures as well as the practice in those schools, thus equating to achievement. Uh, next slide? Uh, talked about the governance thing, but one of the key pieces was the alignment between the superintendent and the board governance around, um, priorities around student achievement, finance, and community development, those are areas that they also felt were critical, um, for, for us in terms, in terms of moving forward, and I also shared some of the work that the board is doing, has done over the last, uh, year, so in terms of trainings around policies and, um, legal, uh, things, and attending conferences, and just looking at initiatives related to, uh, student achievement as well, and of course, the board has supported the district in a number of initiatives going from, you know, redesign Burke, we've got all these programs that we're developing there, the CTE, construction trades, and all the other alternative programs, and the role we're learning opportunities that we're going to provide our, our students, and continuous work that we do connecting with our, um, community partners to support such a, with, as well, that we're putting, bringing into our district to support our families and communities. Next slide? Um, this was an area that they look at as well, too, educated evaluation leadership of government, this was, I think it was a slam dunk for us as well, too, because one of the things they look at is how you evaluate your certified staff, and we follow the Dessie model, both the teachers and for, um, administrators, so, um, it was not too much debate around what we're doing, we just followed what they're modeling, so that was pretty good. Next slide? Um, strategic planning, so alignment with the strategic directives, we all know about the superintendent's directives, alignment with our, um, strategic plan, and some of our strategic goals, and one of the things I know that we share that Dessie is now looking at is Cognia accreditation, which we have been working out, engaging in the process, so Dr. Skinner, you want to take opportunity to share? Um, just to give forward an update, because I know the board's going to be engaging in that process, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and supporting the district and ensuring that we get that accreditation, Cognia accreditation is kind of, is actually pretty significant, because universities and colleges look at the Cognia accreditation in terms of entrance for students, um, and getting to go there.
Right, and, and you know, we, we went through this as a district five years ago, it's, it's something you go through every five years, but it is something the district, prior to that, as a district, the high schools have been, over fifty years have been accredited with it, it's gone through several names, and when we went through the last time, it was Advanced Ed, now it is Cognia. And, you know, we're having our visit coming up, uh, in March, it's going to be March seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, and, um, all the principals have been working diligently to go ahead and get what they need to get done at the school level, we've been doing at the district level, and those four days, or the three days, will basically be a series of interviews, and of course, you know, they will be interviewing all the board members on Monday from one-thirty to two-fifteen, you should have received an email from Ms. Hicks about that information already. Um, and so again, they'll be sending you a Zoom invitation, so that you'll be able to be joined at that time, um, but we're doing interviews with students, parents, teachers, community groups, leadership, so with all the information that we've entered in folders over basically three standards, the three standards that Cognia is comprised of right now is leadership, learning, and resources, they'll look at all of the information that we've put in the folders, they'll look at all of the interviews and garner all the information that they get from those information, and they will make a recommendation on that Thursday before they leave and share it with the superintendent. And at that time, we'll also, of course, pass it on to you and let you know as well.
Thank you, looking forward to that opportunity, because we're trying to light on the work that we're doing. And of course, this year, again, we're going to be expanding summer school, with the, uh, COVID started, summer slide, an opportunity for our students for the entire summer, um, to engage in learning. Um, next slide? Um, yeah, this, this was another slam dunk, uh, area in terms of financial conditions, we had moved our financial structure from seven point five, the time was forty-eight point five nine, I think it's actually a little bit higher at this point, but they were impressed that we were, along with our cleanomics that we had in the last, uh, several years, and of course, this past, um, this past, uh, several months that we had got over here as well, too. Okay, next slide? Uh, we have, we, we created a video to show of our kids and some of the things that were happening, I can show the video tonight, but we can certainly, um, send that to the board at some point, um, to review that as well. Right? So, okay, and that's, that's it, and then we, we formally ask for, um, full accreditation, and so at this point, we are, I, I, I've actually had two conversations this week um, with the staff, and with a team of conversations, talking about what are the next steps, um, for us in order to give them the proper information they need to, um, look at recommending us to stay board, so look forward to hopefully some more positive information on our next steps with that process. Thank you, that's all for that report, uh, President Johnson?
All right.
We'll move right into the financial update with, um, Director Mooney.
I can't get up. Good evening. Are you going to be able to pull it up here, or? Okay. I know, I want the budget variance report. And these are the financial updates for, uh, February. It includes the contract list, the running contract list, and it also includes the bills to be approved for the month of January. Can you make it, I forgot my glasses, can you make it just a little bit bigger? I got to tell you, um, the budget variance reports real, looks really good, still, we are still all in green. Um, that's the revenues, and if you scroll down, you'll see the expenditures are still in green. And then if you go to the second page, this is the most important piece. Right now, our fund balance is setting at a fifty-five point zero zero eight, now this is just budget, not actuals, but that is where the projection is right now. Are there any questions for me?
All right, this time.
All right.
The fund balance, I'm happy to see our fund balance continue to stay steady and when we're in the green.
Me, too. Thank you. So we need the request, um, recommend, Superintendent recommends approval of the financial updates for the month of February.
Sure, uh, I motion that we accept the recommendations of the superintendent for the, uh, February, uh, financial report.
Second. Target's been moved in second. That we accept superintendent's recommendation that, uh, February twenty, twenty-two financial updates be approved, that's presented during the discussion. And, uh, the recommendation passes by the man who's concerned.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, the president, next item is operations, and it's our monthly bond update, and I'll call, uh, Director Robinson to, uh, give some direction on that.
Good evening, board directors, Superintendent Obang, um, tonight we have construction manager Marquise Cannon here to do our monthly bond updates, construction bond updates for us, Mister Canyon.
Good evening, everyone, um. I need to make that darker next time. Um, currently, right now, work we're installed, we're at roughly about seventy percent, um, next slide, please. Um, I told you I was going to allow this slide to just run, um, with what those companies are that are out there, in case you will go and, and take a look, um, our MBE, WBE percentage hasn't changed from the last time that we've spoken. Next slide, please. And so we're still sitting overall, um, in that thirty-one, um, percentile. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a photo of Ruskin's main entry, um, we have started the, uh, transition here to, to build the secure entry, and so what you're looking at is folks will walk in through that, and they'll take a left to that brick wall, we're not really ready yet, but we'll get it all complete, and it'll be pretty nice, so we have all the steel set here, and we have the concrete pad placed. Next, please. So, the ticket booth, uh, new entry to the stadium has been erected, the steel is there. Uh, so we need to get the roof on, we need some signage and doors, and we'll be closing that ticket building up. Next, please. Um, all of the windows, uh, for Ruskin's exterior gym have been completed on, on both sides, so I wanted to show you a picture of what that looks like. Next, please. Um, at Burke, when we actually took this photo, um, we didn't have the fire rated system, and it was getting pushed again, um, but I am happy to report that a day later from me actually, um, taking this photo, uh, the fire rated system showed up, the, the manufacturer did not notify us nor the contractor until the day that it actually arrived here, so we've, we've actually started installing this system, uh, which will allow us to clea- to complete Burke, uh, much sooner than what we were thinking we were gonna, gonna be able to do that. Next, please. Um, this is a photo of the nurse's office there, we, we've gotten that area done, and, and so we just wanted to kind of show, there's flooring there, the ceiling's in, we've got the cabinet. Next, please. And there's the shot at what we call casework, cabinetry and sinks and, and whatnot. Next. Um, Warford, um, at the point that we took this, we had not yet gotten tile on the walls, we had the flooring done, um, but now we, we actually have the tile on the walls, we're getting ready to punch that area and turn that back over to the district. Next, please. Um, and so I'll pause on this for a quick second. Um, the gym equipment at Ruskin, we're, we're still, um, fighting to understand where it's at and, and what those holdups are uh, in that process, um, but Burke and Warford, we thought we weren't going to get their assemblies until, shipping until the twenty-second, and they actually arrived. And they actually arrived um a week prior than what we were told they were actually going to ship. So we've gotten both the admin spaces. Um those assemblies are up. Um we're still in the same spot where, where Ruskin's set um with the theater rigging and lights and, and all of that stuff. Um but we have all of the monument signs actually installed at all of the elementaries, and we're going to be installing Ruskin's monument sign when they're permitting over this next week. It is actually onsite and we have it. Um so that's it for me at this point. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your update.
Thank you. You all have a good night.
Thank you, Sir Robinson. Uh moving right along to uh E, uh Ms. Rowe, is it E? Really? All right, uh if there were, get a chance to see the minutes. Minutes soon.
I, I'm still trying to get into the doc. And once she sent it to me, Denver is still asking for a pass or not. Maybe, I don't know what that means.
That's where twenty two three four.
But I can't, I can check if he's been saying.
Uh Mister President, I recommend that we uh see for this to the next meeting and Ms. Hicks would follow up with uh this agenda to make sure she gets the documents, I guess, before.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. E, that's, okay, there we go, now we go. Okay, E, uh inviting Ms. Rowe to come in to talk about the twenty twenty two, twenty three calendar.
Yeah, it's that time of year again, Board, that I come to you um and ask for approval of the next calendar year, the next school year's calendar. Uh so today, I am bringing a draft of the twenty two, twenty three uh district calendar. A committee of approximately fifteen staff members from across the district have gathered over the last couple of months to provide input. We also did a district-wide staff survey to get um input on important topics. The calendar committee prioritized um a few main objectives. So the first objective was, uh they felt it was important to be in alignment with other district area calendars uh for family reasons and also for uh sharing of programs, particularly at the secondary level and for athletics. Um the need for high-quality monthly professional development for staff um and compliance with state calendar uh requirements. So a few of the highlights on this calendar is you'll see the first day of school is slated as August twenty second. That would be for our transitional grades, so for students in pre-k through second, sixth, and ninth, so they would have their own first day of school. Um then everyone else would start on Tuesday, August twenty third, to give them time to acquaint to the building. Uh the committee felt it was important for uh staff and students to be done before Memorial Weekend in May. So you can see the last day for students is slated as May the twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Students report for a total of a hundred and sixty seven days, which uh falls in line with state requirements and compliance. Uh and staff, teaching staff report for a total of a hundred and eighty five days. Uh the committee was unanimous in the recommendation of this calendar. Uh so the superintendent recommends board action to approve the twenty two, twenty three district calendar.
Did I get a recommendation?
I move to approve the calendar for the coming year, twenty two, twenty three.
Been moved in second to take the superintendent's recommendation to approve the twenty three, the twenty twenty three calendar as presented. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
This has to do with your November Thanksgiving. I see that you are out of school. Is the last day Tuesday or is it Wednesday?
It's Tuesday.
Okay, great, okay.
That was a big topic of discussion.
Anything else?
Is there anyone opposed to the calendar?
Thank you, Board.
All right, now we're down to. Which, which, which item was it? It's great.
I see, uh
No, what was?
Uh two. Uh I don't quite want.
Mister President?
Yes.
Uh I would ask that we wait to kind of decide on the two, because we don't um with these minutes, we have to get the recording again in order to be able to see what actually transpired. Whether the square is out, we can use the roll call or not.
Yeah. All right, um Ms. Hicks. What would be this and get back with us? Right. Teacher agenda item plus.
Mister President?
CFC. C, 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 C.
Yeah, um CFC asks uh about a month prior to be on this, to do that, although we've been kind of busy. But I want to make sure that we're on the next uh next uh board meetings, so that they are able to present what we're doing for our district. As we can, uh yeah, that's it.
I don't think you're talking for the March meeting, right?
Yes, correct.
I think we'll probably have a conversation at the March meeting, because I think the March meeting is a correct fall, then March great as well. So I don't know what the time, what we want to do with that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Close session.
I need a close and going close session.
Mister President? Uh I, I asked that we recess uh from open session, move to closed session. Uh per statute, six, ten, zero, two, one, three, thirteen, twelve, one, nine, R S M O.
Second. All right, you can move, properly move the second, we're going to close session. So six, one, oh, oh, two, one, two, three, thirteen, twelve, one, nine. Let's do both, both the tenured. Right here. Raise. C P. Aye. Roman.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
All right, you have seven to go, Roman.